At this point, we'll call the Tuesday, April 5, 2011, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order. If you would, join us in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to serve you. We thank you for an opportunity to serve your people. Father, I pray that we'll realize our chief end in life is to glorify you and to enjoy your presence. And I pray you'd be with us here tonight. I pray what we do would glorify you, would honor your son, the Lord Jesus, and serve the folks of this county in a way that would please you. We ask it in Christ's name. Amen. Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm gonna ask Mr. Nicholas Cooper from Troop 363 of New Salem United Methodist Church to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would. If you'd just step through that gate right there, sir.
Just step through. (Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're glad to have you with us. Mr. Mashman, are any adjustments of the agenda from you or the staff?
Mr. Chairman, there are no adjustments from the staff.
Okay. Any adjustments from any member of the board? Hearing none. Floor is open for a motion for adoption of this agenda.
Mr. Chairman, motion, we accept the agenda as presented.
Motion by Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion for adoption carries unanimously. We have presentations, a presentation of special recognitions and awards. At this point, I'll call on Mr. Tracy Jackson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. The purpose of County Government Month is an annual observance to promote county government services and programs. This year, the theme is serving our veterans, armed forces, and their families. We have with us this evening representatives of all the departments of Iredell County Government who wish to express their appreciation to all veterans and members of the armed forces, as well as their families, for the sacrifices they have made or are making. And for those of you that are county employees, will you please stand up and be recognized? Okay. Thank you. County government serves veterans in ways that many are not aware of, from providing transportation for medical services to assisting in obtaining benefits that veterans and families are entitled, from protecting life and property to offering opportunities for recreation and cultural events. Regardless of the service we provide, we pledge to all citizens, and especially our veterans, active armed forces, and family members, that we are committed to be of service to you in your time of need. In keeping with this commitment, it is requested that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution declaring the month of April as County Government Month, with this year's theme being "Serving our veterans, armed forces, and their families," and encouraging all citizens of Iredell County to keep its observance. And if you will, I'd like to take this opportunity to read the proclamation.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. Whereas the nation's 3,068 counties provide a variety of essential public services to communities serving more than 300 million Americans, and whereas Iredell County and all counties take seriously their responsibility to protect the health, welfare, and safety of its residents in sensible and cost-effective ways, whereas Iredell County honors and thanks our residents who have served this country through military service, and whereas county government delivers many important services to Americans, veterans, military service members, and their families, including physical and mental health, housing, employment, and justice; and whereas the National Association of Counties is the only national organization that represents county governments in the United States; and whereas the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to actively promote their own programs and services. Now therefore be it resolved that the Iredell County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims April 2011 as Iredell County Government Month and encourages all citizens to honor our veterans, our members of the armed forces, and their families, as well as the individuals who provide public services to them.
At this point, the request before us is adoption of this proclamation, so the floor is open for a motion for adoption.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt this proclamation.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Griffith. A motion for adoption from Ms. Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for your public commitment to the service of our veterans and their families. Now, as further expression of our appreciation, we present a song that was written by Renee Griffith, one of our county commissioners, which has been made into a music video by singer Jamie Tate.
They called my dad to fight a war. I was only three. He came back to our small town, a hero to me. He knew the odds and the price that he might pay. But that's the cost of freedom. He proudly stood to say, "I will fight for you." For the red, white, and blue, I won't be afraid. Whatever comes my way, when duty calls for me, I will answer to the call. I will stand, I will fight, I'll give my all. His strong arms around me, he walks me to the door. I see a fear in his eyes I've never seen before. Please don't worry daddy, you know I'll, I'll be okay. But it's my time to serve. It's now my time to say, "I will fight for you." For the red, white, and blue, I won't be afraid. Whatever comes my way, when duty calls for me, I will answer to the call. I will stand, I will fight, I'll give my all. And if the time should come for our sons and daughters to fight, they'll stand proud and say with all their might. We will fight for you. For the red, white, and blue, we won't be afraid. Whatever comes our way, when duty calls for us, we will answer to the call. We will stand, we will fight, we'll give our all. We will fight for you. For the red, white, and blue, we won't be afraid. Whatever comes our way, when duty calls for us, we will answer to the call. We will stand, we will fight, we'll give our all. We will fight. We will fight. For the red, white, and blue. When duty calls for us, we will answer to the call.
We know that there are several veterans in our audience tonight representing various branches of our armed forces. We would like to take this opportunity to recognize you, your family members, and anybody else that's here with you tonight. If you will, as I scroll through the different insignia for each branch of the military, please stand briefly and be recognized. The Air Force. The Marine Corps. And the Coast Guard. Again, thank you for your service.[693.63][693.63](Applause).
Mr. Jackson, I'm gonna present this proclamation to you, asking you to accept it on behalf of all the folks that work for Iredell County and our local government. Here, if you'd come forward, I'd like to present you with it.
It'd be honored.
(Inaudible). 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 (Inaudible).
Next, under Presentation of Special Recognitions and Awards, we have a request for approval of Child Abuse Prevention Month Proclamation.
Yes, Evette Smith from the Department of Social Services and I are here. We understand you have the proclamation.
Right. Since Ms. Griffith is the sponsor of this proclamation, I'm gonna ask her if you would read it, please, ma'am.
I would be happy to. Whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of the community, and child maltreatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and not knowing how to cope, and whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in a engaged and supportive community, and whereas child abuse and neglect not only cause immediate harm to children, but are also proven to increase the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, health problems such as heart disease, obesity, risky behaviors; and whereas all citizens should become involved to provide safe, nurturing environments for children in all areas of their lives, at home, in school, and in the community, offering them the opportunity to grow up to be caring, contributing members of the community; and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, social services agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Iredell County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders and businesses to increase their participation in the efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith.
Thank you.
And Ms. Isley and Ms. Smith, I'm gonna ask Ms. Griffith she presents you with this proclamation, please.
(Inaudible). 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 (Inaudible).
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. I apologize, I caught you a little off-guard, but you did a good job. At this point, we have appointments before the Board, presentation of the annual report that adds Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee and the Nursing Home Advisory Committee by Ombudsman Cindy Kincaid with Central Island Council on Government. Ms. Kincaid, it's good to have you this evening.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Cindy Kincaid, Regional Ombudsman with Central Island Council of Governments, the area agency on aging, and I'd like to recognize Janet Hall, who's with me today, the chairman of the Adult Care Home Committee as well. I'd like to thank Anna Rice from the Council on Aging, as well as Donna Osborne and Kelly McMillan from the Department of Social Services, our adult home specialists, who serve as our backup agents for this committee. I'd also like to thank the commissioners for the volunteers that you have appointed over time to work on behalf of the Iredell County residents on this committee, especially for those folks who live in our facilities. Let me share briefly the role of the ombudsman in working with your committees. We have roughly 250 volunteers in our nine-county region, and they are part of over 1,800 statewide volunteer advocates. Iredell County volunteers serve the adult care homes and our nursing home facilities. These volunteers receive 15 hours of initial orientation and in-facility training, they receive an ongoing eight-hours training throughout each year, and attend quarterly business meetings. The Regional Ombudsman Program provides several services to the volunteers. We conduct the quarterly training, we provide technical assistance and explanations and possible interpretations of the North Carolina and federal regulations, as well as the residents' rights issues. We provide assistance in organizing residents or family councils within our homes, and we offer guidance and direction in complaint resolution. The Community Advisory Committee volunteers are mandated through the North Carolina General Statute and are legislatively empowered to serve as resident advocates, making them the only agency that has the resident as their focal point for their work. They accomplish this advocacy by making quarterly visits to the homes to discuss residents' rights with the residents, working with our administrators, families, and residents on specific concerns or requests, and developing special projects. Region F has grown to over 15,000 long-term care beds, making it the largest in the state. And Iredell County alone has 739 nursing home beds and 774 adult care home beds. Your county has not experienced any new growth in either the nursing homes or the assisted livings, though, within the past year. I'd like to highlight some of the work done by these committees from the report that was submitted for your review. They both hosted a very successful residents' rights celebration at the Mooresville Citizen Center this year, which would not have been possible without the financial support supported through the county commissioners. We appreciate the attendance of the public officials who took time out of their busy schedules as well to attend during this event. The committees made additional visits to area facilities outside of their required quarterly visits, providing activities, supplies, and helping to coordinate community volunteers within our homes. The Nursing Home Committee worked with Ben Garrison from ICATS to coordinate transportation for residents to our residents' rights celebration. We'd also like to thank Ben and his drivers who made it possible for some residents to attend this event that have never had that opportunity in the past. The group benefits from the attendance of the adult care home specialists, Donna Osborne and Kelly McMillan, at our quarterly trainings. They're able to share information on the quality of life for residents that help both my committee and the Department of Social Services in their efforts to protect the rights for our residents, working closely to protect the rights together. Some of the challenges that these committees have identified are not having a full committee can make it very difficult to fully accomplish the mandates of the program. There are currently vacancies on both committees, and we're always seeking new volunteers to participate. There is some reluctance of our facilities to follow through on suggested changes brought on by our committees, and the rising number of younger residents with mental illnesses who are calling our assisted living facilities home, and the challenges they pose to both staff and other senior residents. And lastly, finding volunteers who are willing and capable of spending the time that's required for this committee, fulfilling the mandates of this committee prior to their appointment, and looking at the appointment process are all helpful ways that we can ensure that those folks that are appointed are capable of fulfilling the duties. This committee would like to invite each of you to attend an in-facility visit with us, getting a firsthand look at some of the issues that we deal with, and to meet the residents who call our facilities home. I'd be happy to entertain any questions, if you had any at this time.
Any questions, Ms. Kincaid? Hearing none. Ms. Kincaid, we thank you for your service over the years.
You're very welcome.
We have very little instances of any grave matter to come before our attention. That's testimony to your good work and those of our volunteers, and we thank you for helping those folks.
Thank you. They do a fabulous job.
At this time, we'll call the meeting in the public hearing in consideration of an economic development incentive for an undisclosed company. I believe I saw Mr. Merrick out there. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. The Greater Statesville Development Corporation comes before you this evening on behalf of a troutman company who wishes to remain anonymous at this time for competitive reasons. This company is requesting your consideration for a tax grant incentive as per the county's industrial development incentive policy. The company is currently considering a major expansion of their troutman facility, which for reference purposes, we will refer to as Project Skybrook. Project Skybrook would involve the construction of a 20,000-square-foot addition to their current building and the location of three manufacturing production lines in that expanded facility over a two-year period. The total capital investment would be $10 million, 1 million of which would go toward construction costs, and 9 million of which would go toward acquiring capital equipment and fixtures over the two-year project period. The company anticipates creating 35 new jobs over the two years as a result of the expansion, with a minimum of 15 new jobs created in the first year. Based on our discussions with the company, we believe they meet all of the criteria for consideration. The business is located in Iredell County, and the facility expansion will take place at that location. They will be making a new taxable investment in excess of the $3 million threshold. They will be creating at least 15 full-time jobs, which will pay more than the Iredell County average, as defined by the 3J wage standard, and will pay for at least 50 percent of employees' healthcare coverage. They meet all applicable environmental and safety standards, and they occur on all county taxes, fees, and payments. As such, and in accordance with Chapter 158 of the North Carolina General Statutes, the Greater Statesville Development Corporation is recommending Project Skybrook receive an industrial development incentive equivalent to .356 of the tax value of new capital investment in the trout facility over a five-year grant period, or an estimated total grant of $142,000. The Greater Statesville Development Corporation would reiterate to the commissioners that the industrial tax grant incentives are self-funding and self-limiting. The funds for grant distribution are generated by property tax revenue resulting from new capital investment, and by statute may only be paid after the grant recipient's property tax payment is made. At this time, I would be pleased to answer any questions regarding this project.
Are there any questions from the Board, from Mr. Merrick?
Mr. Merrick, if the company does not meet their part of this agreement, then they will not receive any of the tax grant from us. Is that correct?
That is correct. The way that the tax grant incentives work is that the company pays their taxes, and assuming they've met all the criteria, then they apply on an annual basis for what amounts to a rebate of a certain amount of the taxes, of 80 percent of the taxes. So if they don't meet the criteria, then they do not receive that rebate.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor or against this request? Okay, hearing none. I declare the public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the $142,000 incentive over a five-year period based on an investment of $10 million and continued upon an agreement being executed within 180 days.
Okay. A motion from Mr. Mitchell. For approval, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Merrick. The meeting remains in a public hearing for consideration of a hazardous materials response ordinance. Mr. Jackson, I believe you're gonna make this presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The town of Mooresville is requesting, in addition to the Iredell County Code that will allow the Mooresville Fire Department to recover costs associated with hazardous materials response. Mooresville Fire Department is the lead agency in Iredell County, providing appropriately-trained and equipped hazardous materials technicians who can respond to chemical spills and leaks. The proposed ordinance will allow the Mooresville Fire Department to bill the responsible party for the fire department's response. This will help cover the costs for paid personnel and their equipment and/or supplies used during each incident. This proposed ordinance has been reviewed and approved by the Iredell County Attorney and officials from the town of Mooresville, and I'd also like to recognize Chief Wes Green, who's here with us tonight from the Mooresville Fire Department, in support of this request. Okay. Are there any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Jackson, are these fees based only on the costs associated with cleaning up the mess or the spill or the hazardous material?
Actually, that would be a separate cost to the responsible party. What this ordinance will allow the fire department to do is just to recover their operating costs, their hourly wages, any equipment, supplies used to respond to the incident. They help to mitigate or keep the event from growing and becoming worse. There'd actually be another responding company, usually a private firm, that will come in and do the cleanup.
Okay.
So that is separate from what these folks are proposing.
And will the Mooresville Fire Department respond anywhere in the county if there is a need?
We do have an agreement in place, and they have been funded through Homeland Security Grants to obtain this equipment so that they can provide response throughout Iredell County. And they also have some agreements, I believe, with some regional agencies so they can provide regional and even state response.
Oh, wow. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Jackson? Is there anyone else here who would wish to speak in regard to this matter? If not, I declare the public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, the motion to approve the hazardous material response ordinance.
We have a motion for approval from Mr. Norman. We have a motion for approval from Mr. Norman. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, just briefly, I would like to thank the Mooresville Fire Department for providing this service, and we're glad that they are a close colleague when it comes to these professional services.
I've always found Chief Green very accommodating.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir. We thank you, sir. We'll move to administrative matters.
Mr. Chairman, the first item is a request from the Fire County, the Iredell County Fire Tax Board and the Central Fire Department to approve a budget amendment, and I'm going to turn it over to our Fire Marshal Ronnie Thompson, and he will introduce the others.
Okay, we have Frank Phillips, who's chairman of the Fire Tax Board, and a representative from the Central Fire Department sitting in the back. What we're here tonight for is Central Fire Department in June will be going for a reduction in their ISO rating, and this request that we have before you for $48,053.30 is for them to purchase equipment that will in turn allow them to get the maximum amount of points for their recent reduction in ISO rating.
So, I could ask you a question. So, we think the $48,053.30 would address any deficiency in their existing equipment to help them qualify for this rating. Is that what you're saying?
This is for new equipment. They have used the equipment that is on their other vehicles and spread it around to get to they'll have the right equipment. This is all for new equipment that they need to be able to get that reduction ISO rating.
Okay. Any other questions?
The current rating is at a nine?
Yes, ma'am.
If the equipment is purchased, what is the anticipated rating? Do we have an idea of what?
Well, we hope for a six, but it'll either be a high six or a low seven.
And this money, is it, it has been designated through our fire tax, is that correct, for this type of needs that come before the board?
Yes.
Any other questions? The floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of budget amendment number 36.
A motion for approval of budget amendment number 36 by Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion? Not? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
We now have a request to authorize a, to demolish a boiler building at the Iredell County Government Center South, and I believe Dean Lael, our purchasing director, is going to make that presentation.
Good evening. When we acquired the building, which is now our Iredell County Government Center South, on the back of that building stood an old boiler room or boiler building that contains two large boilers. That building has been disconnected from the heating element for the Iredell County Government Center South since we renovated that building and moved in. Since that time, that building started to fall into disrepair. The staff is concerned that, you know, any vacant building is subject to break-ins, vandalism, things of this nature. That increases the county's liability. We also feel that the area that the building stands on could be better used for either parking lot or just free grounds to open up that area back there. Staff would like to request authorization to be able to demolish that building. North Carolina General Statute 168-265 does authorize county commissioners to be able to change the use of property, and we do feel this would be a change of use of property that needs your authorization. We do have an offer from a local construction company, Terry Lynn Construction, to, who's offered a proposal to demolish the building and also take care of asbestos abatement. The total cost for that, just for that building, would be $20,270. Along with that, we also, in October of last year, requested that the board authorize us to demolish the old EMS bay that was behind that building. It's an old modular trailer that's set back there, and it's also in disrepair. That was approved, and this company, Terry Lynn, also offers to take care of that for the same amount of money that the board approved at that time, which was $750. So our request is to allow us to be able to demolish the building, to reuse the site, and also to authorize a contract to Terry Lynn for the demolition.
Any questions, Mr. Lael?
Is Mr. Terry Lynn certified in asbestos removal?
Yes, ma'am. He's done most of the asbestos removal and testing for the county for many years.
Is it in such bad disrepair that it could not wait another year?
I have no doubts it probably could stand another year. We feel at this point in time, though, because of the price that he's given us, we've looked at a demolishing the building before, estimates have come in higher than this. At this point in time, with contractors looking for work and actually vying for the business, this is an excellent proposal. We just feel that this might be the best time monetarily to be able to take care of it.
If I could ask one more question. Where will this money come from, this, the money that we're approving is? Because I would not imagine that this was in the budget for this year, was it?
No, ma'am. Actually, when we rebid our janitorial contracts that the commissioners approved last year, we did realize a substantial amount of savings from that. There were also some monies that the facility services identified may not be used or probably will not be used for the rest of this year, and the combination of those monies will actually pay for the entire project. Oh, thank you. I, forgive me, I forgot to mention that we are also requesting waiver of the tipping fees, which is part of Mr. Lynn's proposal.
Any other questions?
Will he haul the debris to the landfill himself?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And he maintains salvage rights to whatever he wants out of the building, right?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? If not, the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the funds to tear it down and waiving of the tipping fees also.
Okay. Motion for approval on both matters from Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion passes 3-1. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lael.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is, you have a request from the Sheriff's Office to approve a records retention and disposition schedule and amendment. This is issued periodically by the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources, but it does require board approval before they can implement this schedule.
Okay.
I'm not sure anyone's here that's representing the Sheriff's Department, but it's pretty straightforward, actually.
Any questions in regard to this? If not, the floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve the request.
Motion from Vice Chairman Norman for approval of this request. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next we have a request from the town of Troutman. Go ahead, Mr. Mashman. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I believe that Ron is actually going to cover this, but we do have the mayor and the town manager with us this evening on this presentation.
Thank you. I'll just give a brief overview, and then I'll turn it over to the town. We've been talking to the town. They approached us several weeks ago about the possibility of acquiring an easement across the county fairgrounds property in Troutman. The intent, or the use of the property, would be for a new greenway that would extend from the greenway that they already have that ends at Old Murdoch Road. Under the proposal, the town would pull up the railroad tracks where they're already existing and build an asphalt trail, and I'll let them give you the details on that. They've got a very successful greenway already in town, and as part of the Carolina Thread Trail project that's been going on, this has come to the surface as one of the priority projects to build on what they already have. Through the Thread Trail projects, this is something that's largely funded by private money, if not entirely funded by private money. Lowe's in particular has given Iredell County $250,000 for future trail projects, and that's for any of the towns and the county, but it's secured specifically for Iredell. What the town's looking for is $150,000 from the Thread Trail this year for the construction of this greenway, but before they can get started, they would have to acquire the requisite easements. The fairgrounds property, actually, we would be crossed in two places. The yellow line is the parcel line, or our parcel lines, and we have a piece here that does not front on 21, and then we have the large piece that does front on 21 and on Murdoch Road. So they would be asking to cross on this piece that does front on 21 and this piece that does not, again, fall in the railroad. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, but you may want to hear from the town first. I think Erica Martin, who's their planner, is prepared to give a presentation.
To add to what Ron presented, I wanted to briefly share the overall project with you. The project runs along a proposed priority Iredell County Thread Trail, which opens private grant funds, as Ron mentioned, to the county and the municipalities within. The existing .9-mile Richardson Greenway currently runs along a former rail corridor between Eastway Drive and Highway 21. The Greenway expansion will continue to generally follow the former rail corridor, but may be a little more peaceful and naturally scenic as it begins veering away from traffic through existing trees. The project, as proposed, includes a .8-mile, 10-foot-wide, multi-use asphalt greenway within a 20-foot easement. The trail will cost approximately $150,000, which the town hopes will be paid for with Carolina Thread Trail construction grant money. The trail will also be marked with signage such as "Look" at street crossings. The overall goal of this project is to fill in the gap between the Richardson Greenway and trails on the Barium Springs Home for Children campus. Property owners of Jasper Furniture, Barium Springs Home for Children, and the Village Shopping Center have all indicated they are willing to grant a 20-foot easement for the Greenway project.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in, prior to 2003, if you came through downtown Troutman, you would see an old, a former railroad bed with cars, boats, trucks, virtually anything that you could think of for sale. Signs for things that were coming in the future, signs for things that had been in the past and were still there. And we, the town, applied for a Rails-to-Trails grant to build the Greenway that we currently have. And I got called a lot of names because everybody thought we were spending taxpayers' dollars, but it was a grant. And I would challenge you today to go down there any time of the day or night, and there'd be somebody out there walking on that trail. So, and the people of Troutman have taken the trail, the Greenway, to be theirs. And, you know, we've talked about in some occasions that a developer needed to encroach on part of it, and people get real upset about that. And we have had requests over the years as people have used the trail, because it's just shy of a mile long, to make it longer. And so, you know, as we could, and as we could means grants, hopefully, we have tried to extend the Greenway. We've got the property to extend it for a short distance to the south. And now, through this grant, the Thread Trail, we have an opportunity to go all the way to Barium Springs to access their trails and to access the Y. Our ultimate goal through Phase 2, I guess, Erica, of the Thread Trail grant, which we've already, I mean, they've already expressed agreement to us for doing this at a later date. But we would then go from Barium Springs under their, use their tunnel, under 21, and end up at South Iredell High School. So, I mean, we could create a tremendous walking, biking area, but we need your help to get across the fairgrounds property so that we can continue the trail and make it a bigger and better Greenway and trail. So, we ask for your help tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions. One, I will address to Mr. Pope if I can. Mr. Pope, there was a great deal of discussion yesterday evening at the Fairgrounds Committee First one, I think we can work out a lot easier than the second. There was some concern about the future marketability of the fairgrounds property, if we ever decide to sell it, if we gave an easement or a right-of-way that was non-transferable to any subsequent property owner. Would we be better off giving them an easement or a right-of-way? Which would be the easiest to erase, and they could perhaps gain access to this Thread Trail some other way if some subsequent buyer had a problem with that? Would the easement, as they requested, be the best way or a right-of-way? I know they're different, but I don't know exactly.
I don't think there's any substantial difference in terms of, I guess, I don't know what you mean, ability to erase it.
Yeah, or, I'm just, if they have an easement across, well, let me get my bearings right. The gate, you see the driveway going into the fairground from 21?
I see the driveway, yes.
Yeah. Okay. That part, the property between that Thread Trail line and the road, we don't know now. And I believe Mr. Goforth still owns that property. Is that correct? Okay. All right. He's always been pretty understanding. His response is, "Well, don't worry, I'm going to take care of you fellas." Well, up there now, he has. I don't have any reason to believe Mr. Goforth doesn't have wonderful people in his family who would inherit this, but that might not be the case. But if we had, in addition to the property he owns, we had a right-of-way, is there some way this thing could be settled so that Troutman can do what they want to do, but if a subsequent property owner had a problem within having an easement or a right-of-way that we could reroute the thing, and Troutman would be willing to accommodate that? Am I making sense?
You probably are, but I didn't follow it.
I think what it gets down to is if we're giving this to them forever, or are we just letting them use it, that if someone wants to buy that property, Steve and I talked about it, and they may want to close that area off, maybe they want to fence it all the way down, do we have any right to say, "Okay, Troutman, you can use this now," but if five years, 10 years down the road, we have other use for that fairground property, and you're going to have to move your trail? That's what we're concerned about.
Well, I think you can impose whatever conditions you want on it when you grant it. You want to impose some conditions that said that it was only good for a term of years, or said that it was good until you revoked it, or good until you gave them 60 days notice that it was over? that it was over, or good until, but subject to the right of the county to cross it at any time. You probably want to make it clear that you had crossing rights.
Would those crossing rights be transferable to any subsequent owner?
Sure, we could do that.
Would y'all have a problem if we had something like that in there?
In Barium Springs, that's a similar language.
Okay. If we could have something in the agreement where if we decide to sell the property, that crossing rights across that easement or right-of-way were transferable to a subsequent property owner, which would not harm the marketability of the property by denying them access to their property from 21, I don't have a problem. Okay. Mr. Mayor, I want to ask another question. That road going into the fair is very congested, as you know, at fair time. Are we gonna have to let pedestrians have the right-of-way going across that trail? I see a problem right there.
It would actually be a benefit, because people could walk easier to get into the fairground, like park at a certain location.
The $150,000, how, what is the distance that this will increase the greenway to? It's currently at .9. What will it increase the greenway to? And do you anticipate any damage to the greenway with vehicles crossing over that?
I asked our engineer that question. He said it'd be perfectly fine if vehicles were crossed or even parked on it on occasion.
And if you do not receive the grant money, will the project be placed on hold, or will you approach the commissioners to fund it? And you don't see that granting this easement would affect any functions or groups that currently use the fairground or the property that we call the fairgrounds?
What is the width of the parcel the county owns there that that drive crosses? What's the amount of frontage we have?
I think it's about just between 300 and 400 feet, if I'm not mistaken.
Part of the driveway is on Ron.
Oh, sorry. That's probably 250 or so.
There wouldn't be any problem with our retaining a 60-foot crossing easement?
Pardon me?
There wouldn't be any problem with our retaining a 60-foot crossing easement?
I don't think so. No, it's got plenty of room for that.
What about any extra costs that might be incurred as a result of ramping up to the crosswalk and then ramping back down on the other side?
That's the fees for the ramps and more equipment that are included.
Be no cost to the county, then?
Not trying to complicate things. Mr. Head brought up a good point. Jim Head I'm speaking of, at the fairground. During the fair, it would probably be less of a problem because people come to the fair around 5:00, 5:30 in the evening to 7:00, 7:30 at night. So you got a two-hour window that everybody comes to the fairground. What might be a bigger problem for him is when they have an all-day event, such as the horse show or a big auction where people are coming and going all the time. That might be more of a problem. People who would walk that Thread Trail would realize the fair's gonna be tonight, and they may modify their schedule, but if it's all day long, it could be a bit of a problem. Would they be willing to accept, maybe you could just set up a temporary sign if there's some ongoing event to warn walkers who are approaching the fairground that there is an event in progress and traffic would be crossing. At least as they approach, they get the idea that they better slow down and look for traffic. She'd be willing to accept that as a condition? Okay. Any other questions? All right. Yeah, let me try to do this. Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve this request with the conditions that any crossing rights that the county possesses now would be transferable in the event that the county sold the property. Those crossing rights would be transferable to a subsequent property owner. And also that, then in the construction of this, that there would be some type of signage provided by the town of Troutman during an event that would be set out to make people aware that there is motor traffic crossing this Thread Trail. With those two conditions, I offer a motion for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, folks.
Mr. Smith also has the next item, it's a resolution to continue participation in the Cabarrus, Iredell, Rowan Home Consortium.
Back in 1996, the home consortium was put together, and we were one of its charter members. We've been a member since that time, although we've been a non-active member. The home consortium is geared towards providing affordable housing to low and moderate-income residents of Iredell, Rowan, and Cabarrus County through various programs. Although we've been a member, as I mentioned, we have not participated. However, we have to, or we have, in the past, stayed in so the towns of Mooresville and the city of Statesville can participate. Under the rules of this program, the county has to sign on through a resolution, which I've included in the packet, in order for the cities to participate. And we've done so every three years since 1996. In fiscal year 2011, the entire region received over $1.2 million through this program. For the city of Statesville, that was $103,000, and it was $86,893 for the town of Mooresville. They're expecting that in fiscal year 2012, that those numbers are gonna be down somewhat, but still over $85,000 for the city and $73,000 for the town of Mooresville. So there is a true benefit to the residents of the towns by us signing on. There's no monetary participation on the county's part. It's just entitlement. It's an entitlement program through the federal government. And I would recommend that we do continue participating because of the benefits to the towns.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Smith?
If we sign the resolution, would we remain in a non-active status?
Yes, ma'am, unless you directed me to change that status.
Because an active status requires a match of 25%, correct?
Yes, yes.
And there's no fees to be a non-active member to have that status?
No, nothing at all.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Count, move for approval.
Motion to approve from Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Ben Garrison, our transportation director, will now present the next two items.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to ask that the commissioners call for a public hearing on Tuesday, April the 19th, on a proposed FTA Section 5310 elderly and disabled transportation program grant. The application's actually due on April the 18th. We've not had this application but three or four weeks now, so we've had to put it together rather hastily. The period of performance on this grant would start July the 1st of this year, and it would expire June 30th of 2013. The purpose of these types of grant, or this type of grant, is to provide new or expanded services to elderly and disabled. This year, I am becoming increasingly concerned about the likelihood of cuts to our Rural Operating Assistance Program. And those cuts, from what we're hearing right now, could be up to 39%. If we lose 39% of that funding, we are probably not gonna have alternatives but to cut service. The problem I have with it is that these services are providing core services to people that are elderly and disabled. This grant will help us to partially supplant some of that funding, and we would target groups for service, such as dialysis patients, developmentally disabled people going to programs, and medical trips both in-county and out-of-county, such as our VA Hospital Shuttle that we currently operate. This grant that we're asking for is $150,000, is for two years. There's a 50% federal and a 50% local match. We use our rope monies, our Rural Operating Assistance monies, as the match for these federal grants. And of course, our ability to apply for these grants is gonna be contingent on the amount of rope money that we do receive. I wish that they would let us know how much rope money we were gonna get before we did these grants, but I can tell them that in Raleigh, but sometimes they don't listen, so. But this is to call for a public hearing.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Garrison? What Mr. Garrison asking for is for us to call for a public hearing. Floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept this and call for a public hearing on April 19th for the FTA Job Access and Reverse Commute Grant.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Griffith, call for a public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You got the next one? You want to go ahead?
There were two?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The next one is for the 5316 Job Access Grant. Again, it's due on April the 18th, and it has the same period of performance of 7/11 through 6/30/13. The purpose of this grant is to continue a JARP grant that we currently have that will expire on June 30th of this year. JARP grants basically target transportation, or employment transportation, to some of our lower-income workers. We provide transportation to both employment sites and to, part of the service now is to Mitchell Community College for people that have been displaced in their jobs and they've gone back to the community college. Just to give you an idea of how much employment transportation we provide, from 7/1 of this year through the end of February, we had provided 19,672 employment trips in Iredell County. This grant, again, is two years, it's for $200,000. The same, it's 50% federal, 50% local, and we use our rope monies as the local match for the grant. And our ability to provide the service is contingent on the amount of rope money that we receive. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Garrison? He loves them public hearings. Request for a public hearing, floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we call for a public hearing regarding this Job Access Grant and the Reverse Commute Grant.
Okay. Motion for approval, Mr. Griffith, from Ms. Griffith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrison.
Mr. David Lambert, who is our Director of Solid Waste Department, comes before you at this time to make a request to approve. We make an offer to purchase some property adjoining the landfill.
Okay.
Recently, I was approached by owner of a parcel of property adjacent to the old landfill that was interested in selling to the county. And in looking at that property, it is beneficial to us, and that'll increase our buffer zone around the old landfill. Had the property surveyed, and it actually surveyed out just slightly more than what we had anticipated here. It worked out 8.163 acres versus, I think, we had 8.157, you know, so it's not a big difference in money. The offer price was $3,250 per acre, with the benefit to the county. I'm just here to request your approval of the offer to purchase.
Okay. I think we talked about this earlier. Are there any questions, Mr. Lambert? If not, floor is open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, move for approval to purchase the property at the set price that we have agreed to with the owners. Okay. Motion for approval from Mr. Mitchell. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is just a request that the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners is making regarding the district meetings. Our district meeting, as a matter of fact, will be, is coming Thursday in Wilkesboro. And a copy of that is attached. If you review that and you have some questions or some responses that you would like to submit, would appreciate it if you could submit those to me by the, certainly by sometime Thursday, because we will be leaving at about 4:30 going to that meeting in Wilkesboro. And this is just to indicate that you are being requested to fill out that questionnaire.
I can give you my two right now. Tell them don't shift any more of their costs to us and keep their filthy hands off our fund balance.
Pretty well summarizes it, I guess.
Pardon?
I said that probably pretty well summarizes the sentiment, really.
Okay. Okay. All right. So you can get those in to Mr. Mashburn by Thursday afternoon.
And the last thing is for the approval of the minutes for March 4th, 5th, and the 15th.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion for approval for the minutes for 4th, 5th, and 15th.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Norman, for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commission. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, we have announcement of two vacancies. Appointments to boards and commission. Nursing Home Advisory Committee, we have two appointments. Nursing Home Advisory Committee, we have two appointments. Says Mrs. Sutton is willing to serve again. I will nominate Ms. Mary Jane Sutton. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I move that we close board nominations appointments Sutton by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Do we have any unfinished business to come to our attention? Any new business? County Managers' Report.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of dates I want to remind you of. First of all, I just mentioned the district meeting, which is going to be Thursday in Wilkes-Barre. Commissioner Griffith and myself will be attending that meeting. And of course, any of you are, if your schedules would permit, are certainly welcome to come and go with us to that meeting. That's on the... It'll be on Thursday. Then you've got... I've got the Managers' Forum in Raleigh on Friday, and I plan to go to that because the main topic of discussion is going to be taking a closer look at some of the impact at the State General Assembly and the actions that are taken right now, and the Governor's proposals will have, and as well as sharing ideas of how some of the other counties are dealing with those possible cuts at the county level. I wanted to also make you aware that we're pretty heavily involved right now in the budget review process. We've finished all but about four of the larger departments and hope to finish those up soon. And... But I will say, we're a fur piece from being able to balance the budget right now, so we've still got a lot of work to go before we are ready to submit something to you. Wanted to make you also aware that on April the 15th, we will be having the retirees and service awards for our employees. And we started last year at changing... We used to do that in two days. We do Thursday and a Friday. But we've combined that now, and we have a breakfast for our employees and for our retirees. This is just the employees that receive service awards. And we begin service awards at 5:00, 10:00, 15:00, 20:00, 25:00 years and above. So just those employees will be getting service awards and those that have retired during the past year. So again, that's going to be at 8 o'clock on the 15th of April. And would certainly encourage you, if at all possible, to try to be for that. And we usually do, and employees like very much when you make some comments or response at that time. The last thing I want to just say is, when we first started looking at the theme this year for County Government Month, and it was certainly something that we felt strong about and how we could honor our veterans of the... And also demonstrate in some way as to how the county supports our veterans, that all county departments, not just our Veterans Service Office, but all of the departments are there to support the veterans and their families as well. And I think I sent an email to all the department heads about this and also to the Commissioners. And I just wanted to express appreciation to Commissioner Griffith for making us aware that she had written a song and that that song had been recorded and put into a video, and then gave us permission to use that, because I can't think of anything that is more appropriate tonight for what we were trying to convey to the public than what that video did. So Ms. Griffith, appreciate very much your willingness to let us use that.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. At this point, I move we go into closed session for economic development under General Statute 143, 31811A4 and General Statute 143, 31811A6. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I was waiting on somebody to work last turn.
Did he leave?
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move we approve a modification to the incentive agreement we have with Coots Custom Header by lowering the incentive to sixty-four thousand six hundred and eight dollars over five years based on a three point seven million capital investment.
Okay. Is there any discussion on Mr. Mitchell's motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried and move adjourned.